Everybody ready? Good evening and welcome to the September 8, 2014 regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. And just before we get started, Mike Kinsey, a fellow board member, was not able to be here tonight. It's for his job with the county in construction. The construction season always gets busy, especially at the end of the summer, beginning of the fall. So he called probably an hour and a half ago to say he was not gonna be able, he was out on a job site, not gonna be able to make it back in time. So with that, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now Pam Arndorf will read the school district's mission statement.
The Waterloo schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every child, every student, will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you Pam. And the next item on our agenda is the first item that we have in our board packet for action and approval. And Crystal Buzza is here for this. It's Exhibit A on page one, and it's a grant from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for a Trees for Kids program, something that's near and dear to my heart. And this is for Orange Elementary to plant trees. We'll get the motion on the table and then if we could hear from Crystal. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge the donation in the amount of $3,054 from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Okay. And Crystal, if you could, give us some background information on this.
Yes, thank you. First, Mrs. Boyce sends her apologies. She is coaching Lego League right now, and so it's just wrapping up. So she was going to try to make it, but I told her that it's more important to stick with the students. But this was a grant that Orange Elementary actually received in the spring to plant some new trees on their campus. In addition, they had received a smaller grant from Green Seen, which is a local organization that also provides trees. And so that was one thing when we looked at that site. I know Ms. Boyce really wanted to make sure that they could bring some trees and some landscaping into the campus area, but she wanted to make sure that students were involved. And so with this particular project, they require that you have some education that goes along with it. So they had a speaker that came in, talked about planting trees, taking care of trees, the environment. And then each of the students were required to help plant the tree along with volunteers. And so Orange has this great pool of volunteers that because of actually the Blue Zones project, they have been going to that campus, walking in the winter. And so they've just become this great volunteer pool that they were there that day to help. And then throughout the summer, they needed a little watering, they helped with the watering of the trees as well.
Great.
And they were able to purchase 25 trees. And I think there will be a little bit of funding left should a tree not make it through the winter, they can replace it.
And the reason this is important, this is, Orange is a new school that was built on bean fields.
Correct.
So it didn't have any trees on it, and it does have some landscaping.
Yep.
But this will be very noted, I mean, it'll, these trees will be very helpful.
And as an expanded learning teacher environment is one big project that a lot of the elementary teachers really focus on, because that's something that's really near and dear to the students' hearts. So she kind of allows them to say, what do you want to focus on for the year? And that was really something that they really wanted to focus on too. So it's a nice tie for that program as well.
Great.
Do they get to decide what kind of trees?
What they did is they actually worked with the Cedar Valley Arboretum, which is a partner and ed of theirs. So they kind of helped them talk about what trees would be best for that area, along with students. Obviously, there are some other issues with certain trees that we don't want to plant. And so they helped them figure out which trees to plant and which ones not to, yes.
Well, it should be good ground for them to grow in.
Yes, yep.
Did they end up planting a variety of trees, or you know?
Yes, there is a large variety of 25 different, they're, the most they had of a particular tree was three. So it'll be very beautiful once they get to their full grown stage.
Good, so they have a monoculture, so they won't, if one tree gets sick, they won't all get sick.
Exactly, yep.
Exactly. Yes. Well, thank you. Any further questions? Discussion? Okay. Crystal, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye to acknowledge our gratitude to the DNR as well, and to Mrs. Boyce. The next item on our agenda is another very good thing. This is approval for the West High School Vocal Music Trip to New York City that's coming up. And we've got James, is it Healy or?
Haley.
Haley, okay.
I'll respond to anything.
Haley, all right. Thank you very much. And he is here to discuss the trip and is, has been instrumental in putting this together. And it should be a great opportunity for our students. So with that, let me get the motion on the table, Mr. Haley, and then I'll turn it over to you for some background information. This is Exhibit B on page two. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve travel to New York City the week of March 15 to March 20, 2015, for West High Vocal Music Students.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Okay. And Mr. Haley, yeah, if you could give us some background information on this as well.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me, everybody. Again, I, my name is James Haley, and I'm the new Vocal Music Director at Waterloo West. It's been a wonderful first couple of weeks. And this particular item with the New York City trip is something that I found out about shortly after accepting the position at Waterloo West. Ryan Penning, the former director, told me that the students had begun, several students had begun fundraising for a trip to New York this coming year. And I thought, oh, whoa, you know, it was a big thing to have happen in the first couple of weeks. But I decided that since all of the kids knew about it, and I just thought that it was something that I needed to at least look into a little bit more. And when I discussed this with Jim Gosnell, the guy who has planned not only this trip, but many other trips like this for other music groups around the state of Iowa, I began to see that it was a great educational opportunity for the kids. If you can, I believe that you all have this information in front of you. With the itinerary that is presented, there are many musical opportunities, but also historical and social opportunities for the kids that really you can't get in Iowa. And so from everything, from touring Ellis Island and the Statue of Liberty, to Empire State Building, the Lincoln Center where the Metropolitan Opera is, and also Ground Zero. On that side of things, this is something the kids and myself will never forget, and may never have the opportunity to see again. On the music side of things, we've got the very first, very first activity that I'm very excited about is the Broadway Workshop, where the students will have the opportunity to work with a cast of a Broadway show. Hopefully, if we can coordinate it, the one that we'll get to see later that night. And they break off into small groups, and they work on a piece of music, some dance, acting skills. It's a couple hours of intensive work with professionals that are out there doing it. Later, after our tour of the Lincoln Center of the Performing Arts, we get to see a Broadway musical of our choice, the first of two. The next day, we visit Chinatown, Little Italy, the Buddhist temple. And we get to visit and perform in the Intrepid Sea, Air, and Space Museum, which acoustically is a great place to perform, and of course, it's a great educational opportunity for the kids. Later, we visit Ellen Stardust Diner, which, that is another wonderful music performance opportunity where the kids get to sit back, eat, and their waiters and waitresses, who are either on Broadway or aspiring to be on Broadway, perform while they're serving and while the kids are eating. I've heard really great things about it from friends who have visited, and so I am personally excited to go to that. And then after that, it's a night of music, I suppose, and we get to go see our second Broadway musical. The next day, we visit the 9/11 Memorial and perform at Trinity Lutheran Church, which is down near the World Trade Center site. Recently, Cedar Falls High School had the opportunity to perform there. And before that, U N I's Concert Corral also performed there. From everyone that I've talked to, it's a very moving experience being that close to where everything happened. Then after that, we depart from Philadelphia, visit the Liberty Bell, and tour Independence Hall. And then we're back in Waterloo by Friday. I've tried to condense this trip to take out any fluff, to have it be one thing leading into the next. Really, we go see one thing, we do something, we get back on the bus, and we're going. And trying to pack as much into as little time as possible. So budget wise.
Question here was, were shopping?
You can't be in a theater district and not let people go shopping.
I mean, there'll be a little bit of that. There'll be a little bit of that. I'll make sure of that. But, but there is, there's minimal time. So the kids will be with their chaperones, and so they'll have a little bit of watchful eye. They can't spend all their money there.
Things are expensive anyway.
Yes, very true, very true. And so budget wise, the actual cost of the trip at 70 students with 10 chaperones and two complimentary tickets for a director and an accompanist is 1,075 per student. However, we're advertising 1,150 to provide a little bit of cushion in case there are kids who drop out and are unable to complete the payments. The payment schedule that is due to CNJ Travel is lined up below there. All of these, these are the due dates, 9:30, 10:30, January 30 and March 1. However, we have requested the payments about 10 days in advance. And so that way, in case there are kids who are maybe a day or so late, or it'll just give us some time to make sure that all the money is given to the travel company in decent time. This cost of 1,075 dollars per students includes all meals, except for the snacks on the way out. It includes the buses, it includes the hotel, the security guards that will watch over the hallways at night in the hotels, just in case. And, and also all of the other attractions. And so there, besides, besides the spending money, besides the opportunities the kids do have to go out there and get souvenirs and such, it's really all included in that. Fundraising opportunities, we just started our first big fundraiser today of selling butter braids and butter rolls. But already, the kids have the opportunity to go out and sell phone books, as well as work at the Cedar Valley Air Show recently. In addition to that, we'll be selling gift wrapping paper, and we'll be selling World's Finest Chocolate. And there will also be service opportunities where we will go and perform, and hopefully at local businesses. We'll be having a sort of campaign to request money from local businesses for partial sponsorships of individual students. And the Vocal Music Boosters Waterloo West High School, the president, Ms. Chris Kemp, is joining me here tonight. They will be handling all of the money and dividing it into individual student accounts. And so students and parents can keep track of that as they're going. They'll be able to contact them for all of that. Aside from that, I just, I genuinely think that it's a great opportunity. It's going to be exciting for me to go on a trip like this with so many kids. And we have flexibility in the price, there's flexibility in the schedule in case we do have to take out something, the closer that it gets, if for some reason, students would not be able to attend. But as it stands right now, I think there are plenty of opportunities for the kids to be able to raise the money and hopefully have a great trip. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. It looks like a great trip. And it's a full agenda, but it sounds like it should be just a fantastic experience for everybody involved. So thank you. I know it's a lot of work for you to do and.
It'll be fun.
As well, and Kristen, thank you for your work now. But there are ways that we can help with fundraising as you're going through as well between now and March. Please, please keep us posted.
Well, thank you.
And that diner is a good choice.
Is it? Good. Great.
The dividers aren't unlike this right here. And this is where the actors and actresses are walk, waiters are walking and performing right.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Okay, okay, cool.
It's, it's.
Cool, yeah.
That'll be exciting.
It's amazing.
Great, great.
Well, I love your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
And I, because of your enthusiasm, I'm quite sure the students are going to have a great time.
Yes, wonderful.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
And suggestion, talk to the band instructors and orchestra instructor.
Yes.
They did this to Florida last year, so they would have some good tips of wisdom for you.
I appreciate that, yes. I will need it probably, the closer we get.
Yeah, thanks again.
I just want to say that I'm actually jealous that you guys are budgeting for security guards, because I used to take kids on trips all the time, and it's me sitting in the hall.
Yes.
And making sure no one comes out.
After you're exhausted from the day anyways.
And when that was a suggestion here, I was, I thought, hey, I'm all for that.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again, both of you. All right. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. And I've got a card to read if anybody wishes to speak. Anybody is more than welcome to, but we have kind of a light crowd today, so. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing no one, I will move on then to the next item on our agenda, which is our consent agenda. And tonight, that consists of four items. The minutes from our last board meeting, regular board meeting, which is on August 25 of 2014. Also, our personnel appointments and adjustments since our last board meeting. Our bills doing payable since our last board meeting. And then finally, an entry for classroom space availability for open enrollment purposes. This is kind of a, I think, a procedural matter that's required by the Iowa Administrative Code. And so that is the fourth of the four items. Are there any items that board members wish to be removed?
Item D.
Item D, and that's personnel appointments and adjustments?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I will ask that item E, the bills doing payable, be removed, because I will abstain from voting on that. Okay, anything else? If not, then entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of item D and E.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Any, discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That then, then takes us to Exhibit D on page 10. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Okay. End discussion.
I just want to make sure that, I just want to abstain from the vote, because I do have a family member who is represented in the things.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I guess I would like, I think last meeting, there was one or two positions that were still unfilled because of some last minute changes.
Yes, we added two positions to address some spikes in enrollment since we last gathered. So it ended up being two fifth grade positions that we have added. And that should get it. I think we've addressed every, any enrollment spikes.
It looks good. You've only got two pages here.
Yes.
Do we have a science opening or?
It's west physics.
Okay.
And speaking of enrollment, now that we're past Labor Day, does, are our numbers of students, does it start to level out? Or do we see that?
Yeah, definitely leveling out. We are, we will however, see a few more trickle in throughout, actually throughout the whole month of September. But we are very, pretty steady right now. We're really close to probably where we'll land.
Okay. So each day, you get less in than generally?
Yeah, definitely.
Or I guess each week?
They do a count every day. We kind of call to see if there are any continued spikes. And we've pretty much addressed any even prospective places.
Okay, okay. Okay. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And we have one abstention. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Five, zero, and one. Okay. The next item on our agenda then is Exhibit E. This begins on page 14, the bills doing payable. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable, and the bills paid between board meetings. Get that motion on the floor.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. And just before starting discussion, I will abstain from voting on this matter because this is an attorney representing a client who's paid by one of the bills. Any discussion or questions on this item? Okay. If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And chair abstains, motion carried. That takes us then to Exhibit G on page 23. This is regarding the bus garage, and really the property swap with the city of Waterloo and with Met busing. This is Exhibit G on page 23. And this was still being worked on this afternoon. So we've got, I think we just got the draft of this this afternoon, came into the school district late. So we've got a copy here, and if anybody in the audience, I'm thinking, Andrew, do you have a copy? As well, we can get one to you. Yeah, is that, I'll get the, hand that down. And then I'll get the motion on the table. If anybody else wants one, we can get you one here. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the Board Facility Committee and approve the disposal of the Orange Elementary School property to the city of Waterloo and approve the property exchange and development agreement as presented. Get that motion on the table?
So moved.
Okay. In a second?
Second.
Okay. And like I said, we, this just came in from the city. I think the city was working out some kinks on their end. So we got it here later this afternoon, and it was sent out, I know Dr. Lindeman sent it out as soon as she had it. There were some, there are some blanks still in here from the city, things like size of easements, width, that sort of thing. I think just talking before, Shane McNally, you noted a few, just kind of clerical things. I had a comment on the property preparation section, and then Lyle Schmidt had a comment on the parking, which was kind of an integral part to this. But just, Dr. Lindeman, before kind of getting into that, if you could just provide a background of kind of what this agreement is, what it does, and what it's designed to do.
Right. This project actually has been going on for quite some time, actually before I became superintendent. But we are looking at kind of a three-way property agreement between Waterloo Schools, the city of Waterloo, and Met Transit. And so there, the, the property exchange agreement actually kind of details. It starts with, okay, what is the city going to do, and then what is the district going to do, and what is Met going to do and give? Because everybody's doing a little bit of a property exchange that will actually allow everyone to get something that's going to be conducive to their future planning. So are you, are you wanting just a little bit of a detail about what, what's included?
Yeah, if you could.
Sure, certainly. So the, the city's property that is, is kind of on 15th and Blackhawk, the city's property, there's a section that will come to Waterloo Schools for, that's actually being given to us, or the deed is giving, given over to us. And that property will become our bus garage, and then also where we'll, where we'll house our buses, and then also bus parking and employee parking. And then there is a section that used to belong to Met property, or Met Transit. And that section is actually being deeded over to the city. And then the city is giving an easement or the allowance to park our buses, because we didn't have quite enough room. So we'll be able to continue about 23 buses along the corner, around the corner, to the north of the bus wash. And then there's another property that the city is giving to the, to Met. So there's a lot of exchanges going on. There's actually a pretty decent map that kind of maps that out a little bit. But again, every, all of the property exchanges, and actually the district, the one I didn't mention too, is that because we're getting the property to put our bus garage and our parking, then we are giving to the city, deeding over to them, the old Orange property. So there's, that's, that's the swap. So we'll get their city, the old city land, and then they will have the old Orange land. And I'm sure I've forgotten something, so whatever you have for questions.
Well, just that we will, the district will be responsible for demolishing Orange, both the bus garage and the school, and leveling the property, so.
You know, the field self, it's a bit of a weird.
Yeah.
It is.
Yes. And I, I just printed this off myself from the Blackhawk County Assessor's website. Yeah, it's, you can't see it public, but yeah, it's the two parcels that go all the way down to, what's the East West Street?
It's like a little alley.
Is it? Okay.
It goes up to the cemetery.
It goes to the cemetery, right?
Yeah. And so it, it's all this, and looking it up, there are a number of different parcels. One of them, I didn't realize this, that's along Orange Road, is actually on, looks like owned by the city of Waterloo. It's 100 feet by 100 feet. I don't know why that's there.
That was, that was.
Is there a park?
No. That was to construct a, a.
Oh, water or?
Yeah, water.
Oh, well, okay. Oh, or?
Not the well, but a.
Lift station or?
Yeah, pressure increasing.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
To put pumps in there.
There was that. I, some of them, they show up on the tax rules as owned by the Orange Township School District. So they may not have been transferred over. I would assume the Waterloo Community School District merged with that, so it doesn't really matter. It's just kind of the name, but. And again, none of these have been taxed. These parcels have been taxed, but. Oh, go ahead.
On page three, under the conveyance of the district property, I see, okay, I was just looking at C. It talks about that if the city sells the property that we've transferred to them, that, and they sell it for more than $100, we get some of that for helping with the, what it cost us to tear down a school. Can you explain that more about sharing of the proceeds?
Sure. The city actually fully intends to use the land to develop housing for Waterloo, which will bring more, more people to Waterloo. But we just put in a clause that if they should sell it for gain, that the first amounts would be used to reimburse us the cost of the, of getting the property ready for housing.
Okay, yeah.
And the questions I had are, and I turned over to Lyle, but the question I had going into this was along those same lines, Andrea, in thinking, because the district here has offered to take the city's property downtown, where the new bus garage will go, and then pay for the demolition there. But also then in return, donate this land to the city of Waterloo with the bill, as bare ground. And so the city can, can work to develop it. A couple of things there that have come into play, so the cities, or the school district's basically paying for both, at least both of them upfront. Now, the reason that clause is put in there is if there was any gain, we don't want a windfall going to the city for something that the school district has prepared. Now, as a school district, I don't think we should be in the business of developing residential lots. It's really more for the city to do. And it, to taxpayers, it doesn't really matter, in theory, I guess hypothetically, where the building is. It's, it's in no one's best interest to have a blighted property there. And we've seen that with some of the other buildings. The city is paying to tear down, or pay to tore down. What was the most recent one?
Lafayette.
Lafayette School. And so that was one example where it was bad that, you know, conceptually, you could say that was probably the school district's responsibility to tear that property down. But it was sold in the, oh, I think going back to the 80s there. So the reason that clause was put in there was to understand, it's the school district's obligation to tear the building down, and it has been a school district property. And I think that was part of the deal, so to speak, with the one cent sales tax when it was passed. And so it's kind of the school district holding up its end of the bargain. With all that said, we just didn't want it to be, we wanted it to be fair to both sides. With the funding though of tearing down the school, I was the one that asked, and it had been discussed before on the school side, with the deadline for that to be torn down. Certainly, we'd love the city to market the property to developers right away, and that could be done. And if we had a developer that was excited to get going, the school district would work with them. If though, the property just sat vacant and it was up, it was kind of on the, the school district's dime though, we didn't necessarily want it to be tied down to a firm deadline of. It's really only 17, 18 months away, my.
Right.
Yeah, eighteen months.
Two thousand seventeen.
So, we wanted to have some understanding there, that this was contingent upon funding, whether it came from, if there was a developer that was looking to buy it, and that money went into the demolition, or if it was just the school district's, that we'd have a little bit of leeway there as to when that occurred.
Okay, all that makes sense, okay.
Yeah, and just out of curiosity, I was wondering when, you know, public entities do swaps like this, is the land, you know, evaluated or appraised? Because obviously, you would think the land at Orange would be a much higher appraisal value than the land down here. And I didn't know, I mean, it doesn't make a difference truly, I suppose, but, you know, like a fair swap, swap for swap to public entities, do that?
You know, I don't know, I'm going to look at Michael on that, I'm not sure that we've done, I don't, some of this happened before.
I don't think we have, I think when we went through the property disposition, we went through a couple rounds a few years ago. And those properties we gave to the city, I think we gave for a dollar.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
And you know, Welliston and Baltimore.
And I think it really, I guess it just depends on what the land is worth to you, to, you know, if, I mean, if it's, for us, the area that we're gaining is really the perfect location for us, so, you know, I guess you could argue that too, but I, I understand you're taking an independent appraisal.
Right, just, yeah, I mean, I just.
Yeah.
No, but it's a very good point, and I've thought of the same with the bus garage property, that in some ways, you could look at that, that was a liability to the city, to keep it. But, in other ways, to us, to the school district, there's probably nowhere else that's central, centrally located within our school district, we could put a bus garage and have that much parking for buses and for employee parking, staff parking. And not have complaining neighbors, I mean, you could maybe argue some area around John Deere, downtown, like the Foundry, but I don't know that that's for sale, I mean, that would be a private buyer, so it, there weren't a, it's such a strange market, I guess, yeah.
And then, I just had a question in here, when it is reading that, I guess, when it said in number four on page four, on a future date to be determined by mutual in a city of Met, after Met secures funding, what if they don't secure funding? Is that a possibility or not?
Oh, I think that's talking about the, I think that's talking about the part owned for, let me read it a minute here.
That might be the part that's.
Owned by the riverfront improvement.
It may, what I'm thinking, it may not affect the school district.
Yeah, I don't think that that impacts us at all, the city will either keep it or.
Okay, yeah, because that's what I was reading, that, if they wouldn't, what happens to the deal if they don't secure the funding?
Right. And they're actually, just a little inside information too, when you go after grants, which Met could be going after grants, sometimes there's a good reason to have an in-kind gift at that point in time, so sometimes you wait to convey land later, so that you can show it as an in-kind, which I believe is the case here.
And then, just regarding the closings, I was just wondering, is there any way that we have like an estimated timeline for the first closing, the second closing?
Yeah, I actually do not know, oh, Michael's leaving right now, I do not know that.
Good times.
The dates for the first closing and second closing, because that was the first closing date and the second closing date. Yeah, when we're ready to, yeah, as soon as, as soon as possible and all, I mean, some of the title work and stuff will take a little bit of time, but I think as soon as you can, as soon as we can do that.
And Lyle, you had a point earlier, one of the reasons this was a good spot, but wasn't the perfect spot, and more land was needed, was the staff parking. But it took into account one of the assumptions on the.
Page two.
Street parking, and so, Lyle pointed something out that.
Yeah, the, on item B, page two, item C. It says, city will support an appeal to the Waterloo Planning Zoning Commission for a waiver to the restriction against parking in the right-of-way on that portion that's on the northwesterly side of West Fifteenth Street, which abuts the primary parcel. I think this needs to be a little stronger, because I don't know that it's a deal breaker, but it would certainly cause us to add to the existing contract we approved last week, because those, there's like thirty spots there that we would have to recover somewhere else. So, I guess I'm thinking of amending the recommended motion by simply saying, after as presented, comma, and then provided a waiver to the restriction against parking in the right-of-way on that, da-da-da-da-da, is approved. So, that, I think, and I don't know what the timeframe on that appeal to the zoning commission would be, but I think, you know, whatever it is, that needs to come first. And so, I guess I would propose to amend the motion by adding that proviso.
That sounds good, because I don't know how often they meet, you know, it's not once a week.
Well, and like I say, it's going to change the construction contract if.
Yeah.
If we have it approved.
If it's not approved.
Yeah, definitely.
We've been told it will be, but it needs to be.
Shanley and Andrea.
Well, yeah, we've got enough money at risk here.
Yeah, no, it.
It's just clarifying.
Yeah.
I think that's the intent, and I have every, so, you know, let's just.
Yeah, no, it's fair, it doesn't work if we don't have those parking spaces. But, and so, because of that, yeah, I think it's definitely fair to bring out. Now, I don't think it should be controversial, I guess, but it should be clear, yeah, to the city as well.
I had one other, on page five, it says, the district has provided, oh, to city a cap, okay, I thought it was the other way around. So, we've reviewed, are we comfortable that there aren't any environmental problems? We've had a chance to review the reports and so forth on the property we're acquiring that.
Yeah, and I think that's addressed elsewhere too.
And I looked at this as well, well, in paragraph seven, yeah, and when it says the property is as is, but that each, the original owner shall, so the school district for the Orange property, as I read it, and the city for the.
Correct.
Old city site is responsible.
Yeah, and it's saying not assuming responsibility or liability.
For the cleanup, yeah.
And they did core samples, I mean, it was a pretty extensive.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we had.
Probably more for there than the city spot downtown, rather than the, than Orange, I probably haven't done much in Orange, so.
Okay, so, so, I guess I move to amend the motion by adding provided, and then follow the wording under C, all the way to the end.
Yeah, and it's Shanley and Andrea that made them, well, do you want to?
Can we make it a friendly amendment?
Or just, or we can make it a friendly amendment too. So, Shanley?
Yes.
And Andrea?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and so, that is a friendly amendment to change the motion to, and I'll read this, the Board of Education accepts the recommendation of the superintendent and the Board Facility Committee, and approve the disposal of the Orange Elementary School property to the city of Waterloo, and approve the property exchange and development agreement as presented, provided a waiver to the restriction against parking in the right-of-way on that portion of the northwesterly side of West Fifteenth Street, which abuts the primary parcel, is approved. Okay. Okay, and any further discussion on that? Okay.
But, and I think overall, it's a win-win situation for everybody, and I think actually getting the busing more centralized, not way out at Orange.
Yeah.
And then, also, if houses are going to be developed there, that's great for the community, and that's, the new schools there, it's a, it's a win-win for everybody.
Exactly, yeah, it's a walkable distance to the current Orange, the new Orange Elementary, yeah, as well, so. Okay, great, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose nay, and the chair votes aye, motion carried. So then, we'll get this finalized and sent to the city, I guess, and Met, and I don't know what Met's process is for approval there, but one of the things, I think we can point out on the bus garage, the, and ask Mr. Koffman, this is Dr. Lindeman, that the former Progressive Tool building has already been purchased, correct?
Correct.
So, the timeline has been basically January, right after Christmas break, when school starts, have that, but work can get done right now on the.
Yeah, there's plenty to do at the Progressive Building, so they'll get started right there, and that'll give us time to finish up whatever needs to be finished here, so yeah, we can get started right away.
Okay, because I think in this, from what I read, the city still is removing some equipment from, is it the salt building or the?
There, yeah, not equipment as much as actual salt.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
But we'll, they'll need the communications connections before they can operate, before Durham can operate.
Oh, okay. Durham will be operating out of the office building at the Progressive Tool, right?
But they, but they're connected, well, maybe they're actually not.
They're across the street from the city garage.
Just the maintenance people are in an office, just the, the maintenance people have an office in the Progressive, but the actual Durham office will be across the street.
Oh, I see, I see, okay.
In the big garage.
Gotcha, okay. Okay. Got it, okay. But we will keep people informed of that progress as we go along. With that, that concludes the action items on our agenda tonight, so that means next is the superintendent's report from Dr. Lindeman.
Sure. Yeah, just a few things, actually, more than a few things, so sorry. It's a short meeting, so I'm going to take a couple liberties here to catch you up on a couple things. But I want to make sure that the public knows that we have started a phone-in call line on, called School Talk, and the number is four-three-three-two-zero-sixty, and actually, it came as a suggestion from one of the board members, Sue Flynn, just to have, we have various emails that people can email their questions, but we really want to be as open and transparent, and as workable with anybody who may have some questions about just really anything. And so, we actually have, it's an anonymous call line, and Tara can tell you that it has definitely been used so far with some really good questions, so we certainly appreciate that. And some people have just asked, you know, if you leave your name and number, we will absolutely get back with you. And if you don't, and you just want to ask a question, then, you know, we'll have to determine whether it's something we need to publicize more broadly or not. But that's been really a great thing, so I'm happy to report that's up and running. And we are, second item is strategic plan, we are really working hard on securing a five-year strategic plan. And so, when Dr. Norris came here six years ago, we kind of had a five-year, which ended up being kind of a six-year plan. But now, with me coming into this position, we are really looking at the strategic plan and revamping it, and getting it ready for another five years. And so, that's been a really good process. We will be beginning, I think, October first, we should be ready to go, we are looking at publicizing that more widely to let community weigh in, and specifically, staff to weigh in, just because we want to make sure that they're very aware of, you know, what we're thinking, what I'm thinking, and then just allow them to give some feedback on that, so we're kind of excited about that. It is really strong, pretty heavily strong in the measurement side, because we really want to know how we're making progress and how much progress we're making. And so, we've really tried to tack on measurements for each of those, so that, I think that's the really exciting part, because it's not just a feel, I think we're doing okay. It's, we've really spent a lot of time getting the measurements right, so that's good. Class size, we addressed a little bit today, we are, we added another teacher at one fifth grade in one of the elementaries, just kind of got a little bit bigger than we had intended, and that's a good problem to have. It's never convenient when you're a parent of a child who either gets, you know, split into another class, gets another teacher, but we are, you know, again, it's a good thing, and so, to get the class size down to a more manageable level is good. So, we are waiting, enrollment is staying really steady, and it looks like we're going to be up. We had a kind of a nice article, I thought, in the paper recently, and we are approaching, we are super, super close, just within a handful of students to where we were last year at count day, which is in a month. So, we're, I think we're going to be exceeding that, which is a great thing, so. And I don't know if anybody's going to mention the reconnect to graduate that happened on Saturday, but we had, actually, Mike and I were on the same team, and we had seventy volunteers who went out and knocked on doors, and several of you have done that in the past, and it's just been a really great event. Mike and I were on a team with Caitlin, I'm drawing a blank on her last name here, Chucks. Okay, we'll think of that in our senior moments here, but.
Do you like your Caitlin moment?
Yes, it was great, she was fantastic, Caitlin, we're sorry.
With success streaks.
It was, yes.
Elementary school, she's great, yes.
And so, we had.
We're a tough team to be with, she handled it well.
And we had the press with us too, and so, we think a few people didn't come to the door, because it was a little bit unnerving to have us show up, and then the press get out of the car with their cameras and running up to the door. So, it was, it was a great experience, though, we did find, our very last stop was a, was a family that was just actually delighted. Matter of fact, the actual comment from the mom was, I saw this on the news that it was going to happen, and I was hoping and praying that you would come here, because I needed some, you know, I just needed a push for my child, and so, it was really, it was just really a great event. And we are waiting very patiently, we know that this week, we are already starting to get some phone calls of people saying, okay, I'm going to give it another try. And so, again, we'll, our enrollment will increase as those, as those people, we're working really hard to meet them where they are, you know, whatever program, we've got a variety of programs that'll fit, and so that, I just can't say enough about that, and would probably give some kudos to Ellen Vanderloo and Lindsay Jackson, who really spearheaded a lot of the work there, so that was great. I want to, I want to mention something that is kind of the tricky part of my life right now, and it's called graduation dates. And I just want to say to all of the parents of seniors, I apologize for the delay in the graduation date. We actually had posted them at one point in time, and since that time, the state track meet ended up being exactly at the time when our graduation ceremonies were going to be held for east and for west, not for expo, but it did overlap over east and west. And so, we really feel compelled, you know, to try to work around that, so students don't have to pick, and are not forced to pick. But I have to tell you, it is proving to be quite, quite a challenge, because there are so many events going on, which is the good thing. But there are events Thursday and Friday, and all day on Saturday, and, you know, there's, I think, maybe between three-thirty and four in the morning, there might be a slot at some point in time, so we are really working hard. The one thing I can tell all the parents is, you know, we are hoping to make that determination very shortly, and we will do an all-out campaign to make sure every parent knows exactly what that graduation date is. We'll be sending cards, we'll be, Terrell will be on it, we'll get phone calls out to them and get it on the websites, we just want to make sure everybody knows. But those have not been set, so if you're thinking you know exactly when they are, call me and let me know, because we do not know yet, we are really working hard on that. I'm just about done, so, there's an amazing high school task force meeting this Thursday, and so, we are bringing the original fifty-some people together, and we're just really going to dig into the plans, and just, I think now we have a lot more feedback from the community, and so, we're excited about that on Thursday night. And so, I will, at the next meeting, give a little bit of an update about that. We have no school on Friday, so there's a professional development day for teachers, and we're actually going to be at the Five Sullivan Brothers, so that's, that's going to be a great event, we've hired a speaker to come, actually out of Chicago, so it's nice and close, he can actually drive here. And we'll work with the staff, so I think, you know, big stuff this week. And finally, good luck to all, there's so many activities, everything, if you want to go to any activities, whether they're music or sports, you can be busy every single night, and I just want to give a special good luck to East High, it's their homecoming week, and so, their big game is on Friday. I believe they play Duke Dubuque Hempstead, so good luck to them, and that's it. Sorry, that's longer than usual, but.
No, that's great, that's great. Thank you again, and information from board members now, I can start, I'll start with Lyle Schmidt. Thank you, Andrea Sparks?
Nothing.
Did I take all of them?
Shanley McNally?
Yes, you did.
Okay, Sue Flynn?
I do, no, I just, September is attendance awareness month, and I'm on the leader in me planning committee, and we have discussed this a lot, that it's just critical to get kids at school, and, you know, they consider chronic missing as ten percent, and so, would equate eighteen days on the hundred-and-eighty-day schedule, but just critical that the kids, a lot of times, learn in class, not just from the instructor, but around them, and it's just, so, if you don't think it's important for your child to be at school, it is. And I would just encourage you to get them at school and promote the advocacy of that this month and all months. month and all months, but especially this month. And also I wanted to thank everyone, Taryn, for the transparency that I think we're offering as a district, that, you know, and here's the opportunity to call this line and get your question answered, and I really encourage parents to do that, because what makes my blood boil the most is I heard some things about these heat days, and I'm thinking, if your child comes and tells you that, call him, find out if it's true before you spread it around. I mean, you know, just get, call, we will give you the answer, we, we will tell you that five children didn't pass out, you know, I mean, you know what I mean, but just the, the transparency is there, so take advantage of it as a parent, because as a parent, I would appreciate it greatly to be able to call and get my question answered, so, and I, and then piggybacking on that, I just thought maybe potentially with the graduation, if it came to something, that we could get the public input, if we had three options and they could call the line and give their opinion on the option that they most preferred, because that would give the parents and the kids an opportunity to have a say, it might necessarily not be the day they want, but that, you know, the majority and that it works, so that way we can get some feedback when we're working, looking at a holiday weekend and, and holiday days and, and, you know, nights maybe doubling up, and you know what the preference would be, because I do know last year, a little bit of the lateness was a problem with young kids, and that's appreciated, that is a problem, you know, so I guess just the more, again, we can just promote being transparent and getting feedback, I think can only enhance both the district and the parental relationship.
That's it. Thank you, Sue, Angela Weekly.
I just wanna put a plug, again, we mentioned Ellen's name for teammates, I just embarked on my fourth year with my mentee, and I can tell you how mutually beneficial it is to spend time with a young person and watch the growth that she has made with some of the issues and things that we've had together, so just if you are available to mentor, if you have ever thought about mentoring, please reach out to Ellen, I don't know what her phone number is, but I'm sh...
Call the central office.
But you can call 433-1800 and ask to speak to Ellen Vanderloo, and please take the time to, to mentor a young child.
Yes, thank you for saying that, very good point. I don't have anything further, just echoing, there are a lot of good things going on and we're off to a good start to the year, so thank you to everybody. With that, our next meeting is in two weeks, on Monday, September 22nd, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom, and with that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, a second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, chair votes aye, motion carried, we're adjourned, thank you all.